Enzo, we're ready.
Ready? Okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the January 19, 2017 Board of Selectmen's meeting. Can we all stand and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to our republic, and to its stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Opening comments. T?
I'd like to give it to you for the start.
As everybody can see, Chairman is not here this evening. He had another loss in his family, his sister Maureen, who was a wonderful girl. And I would ask everybody to keep the Lombard family and Richie in their thoughts.
I also would like to have us keeping our thoughts, the Alessi family. Barbara Alessi passed last week. Wonderful lady. Sorry to have that. Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to approve the prior minutes of 1-5-2017 and release executive session minutes of 7:20, 16, 8:03, 16, and 8:09, 16.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the prior minutes of 1-5-17 and release the executive session minutes of 7:20, 16, 8:03, 16, and 8:09, 16.
Okay. I'll second that for discussion. Discussion? Okay, hearing and seeing and none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We're going to go into the Citizens Forum now. Is there anybody here that would like to get up and speak? Okay. Well, is it for the preservation?
Yes.
Okay. So what I'm going to do is, that's pot, it's way down on the block here. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to move the auction motion of January 24 at noon, property at 25 Forbush, up to the Citizens Forum. And I'll just give a brief description of it. It's a .26 acre parcel. It's located at the corner of Walton Road. It is close proximity to the Mass Audubon and Nahat Thicket Wildlife Sanctuary and not far from Dorothy Cove. The site is improved with a 1,082 square foot home and disrepair and will be sold subject to the restriction of demolishing the existing structure within six months. Any development of the property will be prohibited and the use of the property will be limited to unoccupied and open space. And I might add, it's right across the street from a Palacio property that was donated to the Preservation Trust some five or six years ago, I think it was.
Yeah, quite a few years ago.
It's Zico's Group. They're the professional auctioneer that's going to be doing it. And I'm going to turn it up if anybody wants to speak on it. Okay, Ross.
Yeah, Ross, fully, Nahat Preservation Trust. I'm here to represent our committee and SWIM and, I think, the Mass Audubon Society. And we'd all like to see that particular piece of land stay and be preserved as natural land, be cleaned up, and become part of the Bird Sanctuary. The Preservation Trust is willing to and wants to bid on it and keep it. We'll take the house down and maintain it. And that's about it, you know? We do want to see that land preserved. It's a great piece of land down there and the Bird Sanctuary is a great place to wander and keep natural in the hot. We don't have that much natural land left.
Right. Oh, you're right.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Enzo, you may want to mention the date and time of the auction.
Oh, I think I did. But it's January 24 at 12:00 p.m.
Which is this coming Tuesday?
High noon.
Yeah, high noon. And it's on the site itself.
Yep. My name is Ben Zack. I live at 18 Forbush Road. I just wanted to second that. This is also what we would like to see happen as neighbors. We also feel that we appreciate all the open space. We like to continue and to see that stays remain undeveloped. And I, one other quick question. If, let's say, I certainly hope you win the auction. If the Preservation Society does not win the auction and it goes into private, you know, private hands, what is the chance or what would be the process by which they would have to go through to change and be allowed to build on it? Or is that something that they couldn't do?
Change that they could...
So what you're asking is, can the property be sold to a party that would have the intent of developing it?
Correct.
Or using it in another way? No, the town would not sell it under those terms. And if someone were to bid for it and then be awarded it, there would be deed restriction on the property that would prohibit that.
Okay.
And so they would have to basically encumber themselves. And the deed would restrict them from doing anything but the intended purpose.
Okay. And so there's no way they could override that at a later date, like 10 years down the road or five years down the road or something like that?
There are legal discussions about something 30 years beyond, but most communities feel confident that it's for perpetuity.
Okay. And then what if they wanted to, let's say, you know, cut down all the trees and cover it with blacktop and make a driveway out of it? Is that something they could do too?
Cover it with hardtop?
Yeah, yeah, hardtop. That counts.
It can't, it's in a flood zone, so they really can't. That would be water dispersment. There would be heavy restrictions on it. So it's basically going to be open space because there's a ditch that goes through there. Am I right, Mark? By that whole property?
The rain, by, comes through there, cuts the ground.
Right. So, you know, again, our intentions were, when we deeded it as open space, the Board of Selectmen had voted on that last year. And our intentions were to keep it that way because Nahat needs more open space, especially in the flood zone. This is all going to help us when we enter that, and I've been talking about it, the community rating system. And it's going to lower everybody's insurance. I mean, not just people in the flood zone, it's going to lower everybody's insurance. So it's really important that we do this. And my feeling is we're never going to see the money to pay for it, you know, to all the back taxes. So my feeling would be to leave it as open space and let the Preservation Trust deal with it, and the Nahat Preservation Trust bid on it. And I'm hoping that that's what will happen.
Okay. And is there any way to streamline, just to, would there be any mechanism by which we could just give it to them or sell it to them at a rate or something?
No, there are two processes by which we can dispose of land. So the first process and tax title is an auction. The second process is to take it to town meeting. Town meeting is obviously a delayed timeline, so this is the most expedient way of moving this law.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Answer my questions.
Okay. Anybody else? Mark Clark.
Okay. Now, I understand, in other words, if somebody wanted to come into that property and put up a garage, no way.
No.
Okay, that's good. That's all I was concerned about.
You can put a lawn chair there.
Okay. And I want to thank you guys for working so hard on this and making that possible. That's really going to help us down there. We've had water problems, sewer problems and that, so this is going to help a lot and we really appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. So we read that and that's that. We're going to be talking about that later. All right, so we'll go, at this point, we're going to go to the Town Administrator's report.
Okay, thank you, Enzo. The first item is a presentation regarding the Forty Steps Beach Revetment Project. Just to give you a background on the project, about five years ago, maybe six years ago, my predecessor's predecessor had submitted a grant to MEMA to actually armor the revetment along Forty Steps Beach. So the revetment runs for basically that, from the steps all the way to the corner of Cliff and Nahat Street. And so that full length there is the project site. And what we have here tonight is Dan Cofflin, who will be giving us a presentation. And before he gives the presentation, you should understand that this is a grant that was received by the town. It's 75% funded by the federal government and then 25% by the town. It's a three-year project. We're in, it's two phases. Phase one we're in, which is the design phase, and Dan will walk us through that. And then Phase two is a two-year project of installation. And so what he'll show you is what it will look like when it's done. So Dan Cofflin, who is the contracted engineer for the town, if you could walk us through it.
Okay. Thank you. This is just a progress print at this point in time. As Jeff had indicated, the grant is 75, 25%. The total value of the grant projected at this point in time is, well, the total value of the project is $579,000. So that would bring the town share to right around $144,000 and change, $144,000 and change. Project initially started off, or the concept of the project started off in 2011. We did our first grant then. It was not accepted or it wasn't approved at that point in time by MEMA. We then did a later grant around 2013, and that was accepted. And we've gone through a series of additional submissions with MEMA and FEMA as they had more questions on the project itself. At one point in time, we did go out there with DEP and CZM to review the project and had a couple of different opinions. And based upon those different opinions, FEMA felt that it would be wise to break the project up into phases. So we're in the first phase right now. That first phase is design and permitting. After that phase is complete and permits are in place, the second phase of the project, which is the construction phase, would then be reviewed and awarded. So right now, we're only doing the design and the permitting aspects of this project. We recently had it surveyed. Last survey, I believe, is back in 1997, so it had a little bit of updating relative to erosion at the site. As you can see on this plan over to the side, and it's also in your packages, Forty Step Beach, as you're familiar with, has some rocks or ledge-out crops on both of the two sides of it. And in the middle, there's basically a Jersey barrier, which is essentially functioning as a small seawall. Above that Jersey barrier was dump stone, trap rock, crushed stone that was used as a revetment for, to dissipate wave action. Over the years, and this is dating back into the '90s as well, there's been a series of storms that have continually eroded away. The town has done some work to kind of repair the slope and supplement the slope, but this is a recurring problem. And it's very difficult to do this work because of limited access to the beach itself. Do you have a couple of photos for you? What we have is a series of photos of the actual conditions at the site. They're done during the growing season, so you can't really see a lot of the erosion that's occurring above the Jersey barrier. It's overvegetated. But there's probably a section at least extends back about eight feet and has basically undermined the slope, so that it is under constant erosion at this point in time. Some of the past practices of the town have been to put in a jute mesh or a netting on the slope with additional vegetation. And for the most part, that has worked fairly well. The issue is, again, these intense storms, which would tend to undermine the slope. That slope is pretty steep, as you're well familiar with, and it's pretty much at its limit as far as stability. It's, there are sections along the slope that are about one and a half to one. We usually deem that to be the limit as far as good vegetation stabilization. A couple other areas are a little bit more shallow, about 1.7 to one, 1.8 to one. But right at the corner where you see the bend in the seawall, right above that area, it is pretty limited as far as additional erosion. So the issue is basically if you had additional erosion occurring on that slope, the slope would adjust itself over the years and you'd start undermining what's at the top. And what's at the top is the roadway itself, the utilities, and that affects a lot of the residents in that area. So the whole grant was basically to try to establish a permanent or more permanent solution to the erosion problems that you have at Forty Step and to safeguard those utilities and the roadway as well as the roadway itself. The issues that we have with this project is, DEP has taken some views that basically they would like to see some of these coastal banks erode to supplement beaches. And they have strict policies regarding what improvements you can make on some of these slopes. So the key here is basically to try to identify that this beach or this area does not supplement or fulfill other beaches in the area. And because of the ledge-out crops on either side, we think we have a pretty good chance of demonstrating that to DEP and CZM, indicating that beach nourishment is really not a primary concern for this location. Also, again, because of the slope, it is an integral part to preserve the roadway and the utilities on the roadway. So although we've indicated we got some negative feedback from CZM initially, and that's why we're in this two-phase process, we feel confident that eventually, it may take a little time, but we will prevail and hopefully get the project permitted so the next phase of the project can go through, meaning construction. The scope or the limits, I'll just bring that a little closer.
We're going to permit this through the Conservation Commission, right, Dan?
Yes.
Okay.
Wrap the mic? Yeah, just, there you go.
It's wrapped around there pretty well. Okay. So the first step in doing the actual construction that we have here is to actually gain access to the beach. And as you know, the slopes are very steep all the way around. So the only way we've done it, and historically, this is the way it's been done, is to cut a roadway in along the slope or across the slope down to the beach area. And this works very effectively in the top pot. You'd actually be digging into the ground and you bring that material and fill it in front of yourself. And then you could get basically both truck access and heavy equipment access to the beach so you can do the placement of the revetment. So the first step is basically to construct the roadway. You can see the yellow marks I have here. The majority of the roadway construction is actually on private property. So Jeff has already started or initiated conversations with those owners. And at this stage, it's very, looks like it would go through fairly well. But what we're planning on doing is executing license agreements with those abutters to have access, temporary access to this roadway. And those license agreements would basically detail the work that we're doing and also detail how it would be repaired afterwards. Those license agreements typically would extend for a period of time. In this case, we have a three-year grant, so normally what we do is extend it one year longer. So it would be, those license agreements would either expire in four years or six months after work is complete. And we use the six-month interval just in case there's warranty work involved, we have to get back in there to do something else, we have that envelope of time to do that. So this is basically the first step, is basically getting the roadway in. You can see on some of these sections, basically, what we're doing is how we're cutting the roadway. Starting at the top, it would be basically some digging down in that area. And then we'd basically be panning it out. And then finally, at the bottom, it would be almost all filled excavated from these other areas. So basically, we're bringing down a fairly even grade. It would be compacted, there'd be erosion control on both sides. The banks, as you can see on some of these, would be steep as well because we're cutting into it. We'd put a jute mesh and anchor that into place so we'd limit erosion on that. We'd also have some erosion controls down on the beach area itself to prevent any large siltation, although that's a natural process at the beach. The proposed design at this point in time involves, after we get down to the beach, is basically some large revetment, large stones placed above the Jersey barrier. And that would extend up to an approximate height of about 27 feet. Current elevations of the still waters plus the wave run-up with the Woods Hole Report indicate that we have an elevation of about 31 here. Before, it used to be 48. 48 was basically on top of the roadway at this point. So 31 is basically what we have to work with right now. So the heavy revetment, it will go up to about 27 feet. And then we'll have a lighter revetment above that because that's all wave run-up beyond that point. And that would be up to elevation 31. Now, above that point, because we will be disturbing the slope, we're also putting in coir envelopes, which are basically either jute or coconut husk mesh envelopes, which are filled with sand and then sewn together. And those are basically buried in place. And those would be above, at the upper levels. And it would also be in any area that we disturb as part of the roadway excavation. So you can see over here, we also have some more over in this area. We're also going to be doing some additional revetment in front of the seawall or in front of the Jersey barrier. And primarily, that's going to be at the two endpoints, where we can get the most scour as well as a little bit in front of this area, which is already a rock surface. So we have a ledge-out crop surface. There's nothing we can really put onto there to stabilize it except more rocks. And that's what we'll do in that one area to help break the surf. There'll also be a little bit of the light revetment on this side. It's not a primary wave impact area, but there is marginal erosion from some of the past storms, so we'll stabilize that as well. Large boulders. Essentially, we have a gradation. The largest one would be about, I'd say about seven ton, which is a pretty large boulder. It's about four and a half feet in diameter. And some of the other ones would basically be of a smaller size, probably something in the range of about two feet in diameter. So this is the basic mock-up as far as a section through, what would be provided on there? You have your Jersey barrier at the base, that's anchored in. There'd be the heavy stone revetment. Again, this extends up about 26 feet or so, and the elevation's about elevation 27. And then additional smaller revetment, and that would extend up to 31. And then the coir envelopes, which are anchored into place, with soil anchors and roped into place. So they're stabilized, and that area is covered over with soil materials that we have on site. And then it is revegetated. Now, that revegetation would also eventually extend into the smaller revetment, but this would always remain solid large stone revetment. Underneath would basically be a geotextile, some bedding stone, basically to stabilize it and allow free drainage. And obviously, there would, any other disturbed areas outside of that would be either set with a jute mesh to stabilize them as well.
So, Dan, how does the drainage work in that lower section? I would imagine you have the potential of getting large amounts of water in between those rocks.
Right. So basically, the key is basically not to lose fines from underneath the system. So this basically, this area in here basically is the geotextile. And that would separate the fines from moving or transmitting out of this area. When you have large wave action, this would be a saturated area. The soils up here would also be saturated, but the issue is, so those soils don't move, you have the larger revetment to hold it in place.
So the water within the rocks itself, does it weep through the...
It would weep through the Jersey barriers.
All right. That's what I was looking at. See if there's some drain there.
Yes. But basically, some would infiltrate, but in this area, I'm sure we have ledge-out crops not too far below the surface in many of the areas. So it would be basically skimming down to and draining out. But the key is basically to retain those native soils in place so they don't move.
And you're actually tying, you're going to be tying this into the, around the corner to the, they just did a bunch of work over there, too. I think it was Costin's and, it's pretty close, I think.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to take some, see some pictures, we did that project as well.
How big were the, the first time they did it, the rock, I think the boulders were too small.
Most likely were.
Back in 1990.
This is just an example, pretty much, of what was done around the corner. First is basically the roadway. You see some additional pitches on the placement of the material, placement of the stones. And also, you can see some of the coir envelopes being set. And then finally, the finished product of the finished pitcher.
Well, I know that that was, it's a real problem out there because they were going to lose some of their property and the town's going to lose their utilities and the roadway pretty soon.
Right.
If we don't do something about it. So I think it's a great idea and I think it's, the way it's placed is perfect. And then, of course, you have Northeastern on the other side, they're doing a bunch of work, too. So they're all kind of tying it together.
Right.
So, Dan, could you walk through the timeline, the, walk you through the first phase and then the two phases and Phase Two?
Right now, we have, the first phase is, will extend to August of this year. And during that first phase, even though we can't get extensions, well, hopefully will be done well before that, this first phase is basically development of the design plans, specifications, and putting together basically documentation for submission both to the CONCOM and DEP. And that submission would have to be an alternatives analysis as well. And the alternatives analysis would look at different types of slope stabilization techniques and the reasons why we picked this type of system in order to, you know, justify our notice of intent filing. So essentially, after that first phase, we'll go to the CONCOM. At that point in time, DEP or CZM may also make additional comments. We may have to address additional concerns. And that's why we've left a good margin of time, basically, to address those issues and also some time for DEP and CZM to respond back, which tends to be a little bit longer than our response. So what we're planning on doing right now is, probably by mid-February, we'll be in a position to actually start the Conservation Commission filing, and we'll take it from there. But essentially, we have until August of this year to complete Phase One. If for some reason, we're still in the process of negotiating with DEP or CZM, we can ask for an extension, but that's our timeframe currently. After approvals, permit approvals, we would then go back to MEMA and FEMA, present all the documentation relative to the approvals. And at that point in time, they would then issue the second phase of the contract or the grant. The town would sign that. They'd need money in place at that point in time. And then we'd probably have about two years. We have a three-year process involved here. So we'd have another two years because we've used the first year for the design and the permitting, two years to do the actual construction. We typically like to do this in the fall or through the winter, but make, you know, primarily in the fall is the key point when we can do this. Tends to work well. The beach is on in full use at that point in time. You can gain access. Vegetation's still stable. And basically, you have a period of time where hopefully you don't have too many storms washing in to disrupt the work.
Are they going to change the vegetation behind it? Are they going to try to?
The vegetation up in the upper slope? We may add some additional vegetation, it's a little bit more stable. We do have a vegetation plan right now, but we'll specify species later on.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions?
The whole of the, the seven camps, are they going to be secured or... The song was a song, that's a very good one. We've had hurricanes that have actually moved stones out there.
Sure.
And if you get, you know, we have hurricanes that we can't, I mean, not reentering them, but it's actually, it has actually moved stones out there.
Yeah, the typical problem with the movement of stones, we have a geotextile under ours, we have bedding stone underneath that, and then we have the heavy revetment on top. The reason why a lot of the stones typically move is because the fines and the fine soils underneath the stones are washed out as the water withdraws. So as that soil moves, the rocks shift. And when they rock shift, they lose their locking, which is basically, all these stones are going to be locked in place with smaller stones and chinked, basically. So long as the base material doesn't move or shift, then the top material should be intact.
What was the base material?
Base, well, you have a natural base material, which is the slope. Then you have your geotextile, and then you'd have a gradation of stone. You'd have a crushed stone, a larger stone, a trap rock, a larger stone after that. And then each of the large revetments would be choked into place upon setting. So it's a locked-in stone revetment. And again, so long as the base material, which is your natural slope, doesn't move, and what's stopping it from moving is that geotextile fabric, that whole...
In the financial plan exercise summary, that free cash, we were able to set aside forty-five thousand five hundred. And that'll be left as unencumbered funding and will roll into the general fund. We have capital funding that through the debt schedule, we're able to carve away capacity so that we have that for future use. And at the end of the five-year period, we should have about four hundred thousand dollars worth of capacity built into the system. Paving program, we have moved twenty thousand dollars into the water and sewer for the first year. And then in future years, we will work to use available funding like free cash to buy down that amount. Stabilization fund, we are contributing six thousand five hundred this year. And the same for the other post-employment benefit contributions will be contributing three thousand three hundred. So the sum total of contributions to the financial planning exercise is about seventy-five thousand three hundred plus the capital debt capacity. So some total, we have about a hundred and twenty thousand three hundred dollars that of value that have been set aside in addition to all of the expenditures that we see. The goal of this program is that at the end of the five-year period, we have greater stability, we have greater discretion over our funding. And that we are well ahead of the curve and not spending at the rate we're spending right now. So that is kind of an overview of our budget going forward. There's still lots of work that has to be done. The finance committee will begin their work next week. And I will be meeting with them to walk through the process. Tonight you have before you the budget, the capital plan, and the financial planning exercise summary. So what I would like to do is seek a vote of the selectmen to send this to the finance committee for their process. Understanding that we will continue to work on it at this level as well. Any questions on the budget? I know it's a lot to take in.
I'll entertain a motion that we... Well, let's make the motion then, second and discuss.
I move the board of selectmen vote to send the finance committee FY two thousand eighteen balance budget in order that the two thousand eighteen budget development process can be started. The budget, however, continues under review by the board of selectmen and the town administrator. And any resulting changes will be forwarded to the finance committee for consideration.
Okay, I'll second that for discussion.
Discussion. Well, under the circumstances, I'd like to move this to the February second meeting. But if you wish, I mean, we can talk this over. As long as we have additions, when the full board is here, we can really talk about sending additions forward. Either way, it's fine by me, but I'd like to see the full board look at this before we send it forward.
I would like to see Richie here too. It's only fair to him, and he's been a selectman for so long that, you know, he understands budget process. There are some changes I would like to see in the budget that I've looked over. I don't have a problem sending it to the FinCom for them to look at.
Certainly, and that's what your vote would do.
I don't want to, I mean, I don't want to make, I don't want to accept the budget.
No, 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 no. And that's why the vote was worded as it is, because what you're doing is you're saying that, all right, this is a balanced budget, start working on it, and we will continue and come back to you with more changes.
I don't have a problem sending it to the finance.
Part of my reason is that I sat through a three-hour budget meeting downstairs, sore hip and all. I just had my hip done. And it should have only lasted an hour and a half. A lot of people had a lot of things to say, so I'd like to see the full board. But if we can send this forward knowing that there are more revisions, then fine by me.
Okay, and I do want to attend, and I usually do, attend the finance committee meetings. And it's kind of fun when they...
And they get started, they get started right off.
They do, they're actually scheduled for next week. And we have the budget binders ready to be loaded and sent to them for their start.
So we really can't send them an empty binder, can we?
No, and time is of the essence.
Okay. Okay, so...
I just, knowing that with the full board here, we can spend, I hope not a lot, but at least some time talking through. Because it seemed that, you know, the full board had a lot of questions.
The one thing that I'd asked of the chairman, and so when we're together, we should, we should speak of that, is I'd like to actually hold a couple of meetings, just us, to kind of sit down and cull through it all. And then have those, that back and forth so that I can get some more feedback from you. So I think that's what I would advocate. I'll talk to each of you separately in preparation for the meeting we have next week. And at that time, maybe we can talk about scheduling a meeting of sitting down and looking at this. But in the interim, for the sake of the finance committee, I think it's good to get this ball rolling.
Yeah, I'd like to see them, they're going to meet next week anyway, so I'd like to see them get something, you know. And I, but I do want Richie here for...
He had some changes.
Yeah, I have, I think I have some, and I'm sure you do, and I'm sure the FinCom will too. So, okay, all those in favor of sending it to the...
Aye.
FinCom, okay, aye.
Great, thank you. The next item has to do with the warrant. Tonight we'll be looking for a vote to close the warrant as of January thirtieth. We don't meet again till February second, so you have to take the vote tonight. What you have is a combination of documents. The first document is really a listing of the routine articles and the potential new articles. At the February second meeting, what I'd like to do is talk to you about the potential new articles. And then you also have a second document in your packet, which is a draft warrant. And in that draft warrant, we just started loading the standard shell of the warrant as we see it. Many of the articles repeat themselves year after year. So we keep them in their form, and we just start loading with the new information. So what you're seeing here is mostly just those articles. But I've highlighted those areas where we actually have some change. So you'll see some yellow highlighted areas that are within this new warrant. It's a, and we'll have to look at a combination of these as well as that potential list, because they do vary. The potential list have items on there that we hear about or we've discussed in previous meetings. And they're just items we need to bring forward to see if they're ready to go forward. So looking at the highlighted items, the assessing office would like to bring forward a senior tax work-off program. We have modifications to a couple revolving funds. We have a school capital item, we have a couple of other capital items, but the school capital item is actually a new one. We have a stabilization fund article, which would allow for the funding that we just talked about in the planning exercise to be placed into the stabilization fund. We also have a similar other post-employment benefit article that would do the same to allow the money to be set in there. But then also you have a other post-employment benefit article that relates to the new modernization act changes that have recently come up. That we have a trust fund and we need to modify it so that it's in compliance with the trust fund. Article twenty-six you'll see is for community preservation committee actions. And we are waiting for their process. Their deadline for submittal is tomorrow. And so they will start their process immediately. We typically don't see those articles until, you know, a month down the line. What you'll see in the capital plan is that we've listed a number of capital-funded issues that will be funded by CPC. So we'll be going through that process and we'll report back as the information is available. And then we also have one petition that has started surfacing. It hasn't been submitted yet, but that's listed right here under article twenty-eight. And that is what we're seeing right now for the warrant. When, if, tonight I'd just like a vote to close the warrant on the thirtieth. And then we'll come back on the second, and we'll pick up this discussion at that point.
Okay, so you want to close the warrant on the thirtieth?
On the thirtieth, yeah. So there are two closings.
Typically, that's, that's the way it should be done.
Yeah, there are two closings. The first closing is earlier for the interior, internal staff, et cetera. And then the public is for the thirtieth.
Right. Has there been any citizens petitions come in yet?
We've just heard of one, possibly two, that we haven't come in though yet. So they'll usually wait until the last week.
Okay, I'd like to hear about them. All right. So as long as it's the thirtieth, as long as it's the last day of January, I don't have a problem. So I'll entertain a motion that we close the...
I move the board of selectmen vote to close the April twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen annual town meeting warrant as follows. January twentieth, two thousand seventeen, close for submittal of articles by town boards, committees, and staff. And January thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, close for submittal of articles by the general public.
I'll second it for discussion, discussion?
Yeah, this does not mean us.
No, no.
Yes.
The board of selectmen can go right up to the very end.
Right.
And so...
And we would, I think, for a citizen, if they wanted an article in the, in the warrant, if it's late.
If you close it on the thirtieth, which you're required to, they would have to submit a petition, but a petition is only ten signatures.
They have to submit a petition anyway, I mean.
True, true.
And the twentieth is for internal, but the board can, that's a means of just giving us a little more running time. But the board can entertain any article at any point up to the point where you close the warrant for printing.
And in discussion, this article twelve, senior tax work-off program? All the work we're doing as selectmen and with seniors, we should probably pay no taxes, Enzo.
So it went up, it went up to tax them off from fifteen hundred to, from a thousand dollars, which means that the state's going to kick in another five hundred bucks. So that's good, I mean, you know, for the seniors that want to get down in, in any department, I think, isn't it?
Right.
Well, yeah, what they can do is they can do the work-off for any of our town departments. And we use quite a few seniors for that purpose.
Yeah.
And they, they work very well.
Okay, so all those in favor of closing the warrant on the thirtieth?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item is a snow and ice authorization to exceed the budget request. We haven't had a lot of snow as of yet, but as you know, sometimes it isn't the quantity of snow, it's the amount of freezing rain or precipitation. So unfortunately, when we have freezing rain or icy conditions, we have to put out product, we have to expend labor, we have to use our equipment. So at this point, we have an overrun, well, let me step back. Each year we fund twenty thousand dollars in the snow and ice fund. And each year, we've gone over. So this is a traditional expectation. And the state allows us to exceed the budget and then fund the amount at a later time. So at this point, we've exceeded the twenty thousand dollar budget that's in there by approximately thirty thousand dollars. So what we would seek is a fifty thousand dollar allotment to go, our authorization to go over the amount, so that would give us seventy thousand dollars. And right now, we have expenditures of just under fifty thousand.
I move the board of selectmen vote to authorize the town administrator to exceed the snow and ice budget by an additional fifty thousand dollars. Increasing the overall authorization to a total of seventy thousand dollars.
I'll second that for discussion, and is there any discussion?
No.
I just have one question. Typically, we, every year is twenty thousand dollars. But doesn't some of that come from water and sewer, the enterprise fund?
It doesn't, although we have in the past charged equipment costs.
Right.
So, but not snow and ice itself.
Okay, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Great, and that's all I have for the town administrator reporting.
Ocean, I do want to talk about, oh, first of all, the wharf wall. You said that it started today. Now, are they going to, they're taking some of those, there was a few questions that were asked of me. They're taking some of those big cobblestones out, the big granite stones. They are going to be put back in, right?
Yeah, what they're doing today is, there are various aspects of the project that are happening. The footing of that entire wall is breaking apart. So what they're doing is they're trying to get the sloughing parts of it removed. And I think what they're having to do is take out some of the stones to get at the sloughing material. And then they're going to replace or fix the footing.
Okay.
But they're supposed to keep the wall intact, and then they're going to come back and grout it.
Yeah, okay. There was some concern that, you know, they were taking, they were going to take the, those granite stones, they're huge, out of there. I think they're probably curb stones.
Yeah.
And replace them with something that we didn't, you know, wouldn't look so nice. And that's, you know, it's kind of a nice wall, so hopefully they'll, they'll keep it that way. And one other thing, trash. I'd like to see them get a monitor out. There's so many people that I get calls all the time, and I keep, they, the people do call the police, and they go through the routine. But the DPW has to go out and pick up a lot of trash, because they're just skipping houses. And these people I know are putting their trash out before seven, they'll just go right by it. So I would ask that they provide us with a monitor for a couple of weeks, just to make sure that these guys are picking up the trash. Would you agree?
DPW picked mine up two weeks ago.
Yeah, there's no need, there's no need to that, they have other things to do. And it's fine if they do it, they don't mind. But these guys are supposed to be picking up the trash, and then you can't get a hold of them. So, and I remind everybody that if they don't, call the police station, and the police stations, the way it goes, the police will call the DPW, and they'll take care of it. Because you can't get a hold of the DPW or the town hall on a Friday afternoon.
Correct, correct, and then there's a call out. Yeah, there's a clause in the contract for collections that allows us to call for this runner, so yes, we'll talk with them. And then ocean rescue?
Okay, the ocean rescue. I'm going to make a motion that we suspend the ocean rescue for the winter months. I would entertain that motion.
Second discussion.
Okay. My reasoning behind it is, I don't think there, there's not enough training right now for these guys. And I do want to see better training. We need, we're going to, I mean, we're on the, we're in the middle of the Atlantic. And in the wintertime, these guys have to go out, for them to go out in that water with a Zodiac and possibly get hurt or killed is, is, to me, is not a good idea without really, really good training. And this goes for the regular guys, that they're the ones that are going to go out, because they're the ones that are there during the day. I think we need better equipment, and I think we need training with certifications. They need to be certified, because if something does happen, they're going to, someone's going to ask for certifications. Well, you know, where's your certification for this and that? So I think we should move to, just suspend it for the winter months. And I know that if they do get a call, and it's close by, they're going to respond anyway. I know the firemen, and they'll respond, and if they can get to the person, I'm sure they will. But to send them out in a Zodiac or in harm's way would not be my, my pick, so.
If I could recommend, we're meeting with the fire architectural assessment next week, and the chief will be there and several of the firefighters. We may, if you don't mind talking about it then, because there are requirements that, for us to respond. And I think if we can define what the training limitations are, I think that would be more helpful. Because I know that Mike has to, Mike the fire chief, he has to work to meet our obligations and prevent us from becoming liable in any situation. So I guess that would be a better conversation to have with Mike and his men to see if we limit what you consider to be the risky training elements.
Well, that's my point. I mean, I don't want to send, if they're not certified and they go out in the middle of the ocean, you know, for, after somebody, then we'll be liable. I mean, I would say that, and this, this is new, I mean, this is, just came upon us this year, that, you know, he was going to extend the the ocean rescue into the winter months. Now, I can tell you that, that's fine. If they get a call from, you know, there's a kite surfer on Doggy Beach that's in trouble, and he's close to shore, they're certainly going to try to help him. But to send, there's no launch point there for a Zodiac, and to come around from a wharf, they'll flip it over. I mean, they don't have the equipment, and I just can't see, without the proper training, the money, and the involvement from the whole staff down there, I just think it's a mistake. So I would move that we suspend it for the winter months this year. We get them trained, you know, we find some money to get them trained, and the proper equipment.
Again, we had this conversation with the fire chief of a previous meeting, and at that time, he had, he talked about his understanding your concerns. And that he would take those into consideration as he moves forward with his policies. And I need, each department had to be able to meet their obligations, protect the town in the manner that they're required to. And I think that, again, by just expressing these concerns, Mike can come back to us and talk to us about what limitations he can place on anything that occurs. But I know he wants his guys to, the firemen, to be ready for response to limited levels in any situation. So I guess the question is, what, what aspects of training you find problematic?
I think that, I think that we should leave it the way it always was, and that is suspended at a certain time. And I know that if they get a call, and there's somebody drowning in the middle of the winter, or something, they're having a problem out there, I know they're going to go out there and they're going to try. They're going to, they're going to call the coast guard. I would hate to see them go out there and get in trouble, and the nearest company that's going to come is Marblehead, and they're a half an hour away, half hour, forty-five minutes. And you can't last in the water that long, not in the wintertime, not around here, you can't. So, and I understand what he, what you expect and what we expect, but I would suspend it for, I would just go back to the way it was a year ago, and we work on this.
And I think the chief can work with you with that, in that direction. So I'm not saying that we're not kind of agreeing. I'm just saying that in the agreement, there's a subtlety that I think works best for the town. Because I, what I want to avoid is being in a situation where we inadvertently create a liability, that's all.
Okay, well, you know, again, I think we, I think we will incur a liability if something happens to one of those guys. So I would move that. T, would you?
Let's call the vote.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Oh, okay, okay, so all those in favor of suspending for the winter?
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay, the motion carries. Okay.
You have one announcement?
Old business.
Old business. Any old business?
On the Nahant Open Space Master Plan, N-O-S-M-P. There's been a lot of talk, there was a great meeting, I thought it was a great meeting. Everyone voiced their opinions, especially the Fox Hill Road, lower end, towards the pharmacy, many of whom I grew up with. And they're right on. So I went up to talk to the town administrator, but at the last meeting, I asked for a, from our town council, as far as what we can do. Are we tied into the Nahant Open Space Master Plan if we start with dredging? Which now has become more than dredging, it's become taking care of the people down at that end of the Fox Hill Road too. And the town administrator is confident, he's talked with the public works director.
Director, do I have it?
Director, yes.
Thank you. And, and just that we're on top of it, we're working towards it. And I asked for an opinion from the town council, what our liability is towards the Nahant Open Space Master Plan. And he said, the board of selectmen will not need to approve the overall plan if they elect to move forward by dredging down by Fox Hill Road. In fact, I'm paraphrasing here, in fact, the town charter expressly provides the board of selectmen with, quote, "the general direction and management of all town property," unquote. So we are covered, I want the Fox Hill Road people to know that all of us are on top of this. And it's as important to us as the revetment, because these people get flooded constantly. So, thank you.
That's, that's good, T, thank you. The, talking about the Fox Hill Road, at the bottom of Fox Hill Road, there's a real issue with flooding, like T said. The catch basins go nowhere, so the dredging, what's the dredging going to cost, do you figure?
We're working with mosquito control to see if they can do the project for us, and then use our funds to, you know, get us further down the process. They're analyzing it at this point, we only spoke with them right after the open space recreation master plan presentation. So we anticipate within two, three weeks, we should know, and the timeline if they can do it. If they can't do it, then what we'll do is we'll seek bids to try to determine if, through a combination of DPW work and contractor assistance, we can spend, we can spend the money to the furthest extent possible.
Okay, because it's twenty thousand dollars, so I don't think we're going to spend it all on dredging the ditches. I would appropriate that money, the rest of the money, to go to fixing the catch basins down there that don't drain right. We've got to do something in that area. There was talk at the meeting about Doggy Beach, that the pipe, that the line went up to Doggy Beach. And I, unfortunately, that pipe is under someone's garage, and it's collapsed. So, yeah, so we can't use it. So it would have to go through the ditch, and I know there's some easements between Fox Hill and Ward Road, is it? Would it be Ward, Ward Road?
Yes.
Into that ditch. And that would drain the other way, which it should anyway, which it always has. So we should try to get that pipe, all those, those catch basins tied in as soon as possible for those people, so that they drain the proper way. I wouldn't want it on Doggy Beach anyway, I don't think it's the right thing to do, because you'd be digging up the dune, number one. And number two, you'd have to put a clapper valve there, and they don't always work right. I think the best way to go would be the ditch. That runs along Ward Road.
My opinion is that very old people like our fathers figured out a way to make it go to Doggy Beach. And I think Doggy Beach is in fact the answer, but I'm not an engineer. But I really, really, really don't want to see us putting above-ground ponds and fields, et cetera, when the infrastructure needs work first.
Yeah, we need to fix that first.
And we all are on the same path, boat on this, it's just, it has to be fixed.
So I'd like to see some of that money go towards that. It's, it's, it's a grant, it's drainage, and it, and I think, I think we could probably do it, you know?
Yeah, I think what we'd have to do is just navigate through what aspects of it we could fund, and then with our own town funds, we can, the combination will get us there. But I was very pleased to hear that somehow there was a, historically, an outlet that went towards Doggy Beach. Because that makes more sense than sending it all the way across to Willa Road.
Right, the only problem is, I talked, actually talked to a former administrator today, and I asked, I talked to him about it. And he informed me that, that the house, there's actually a garage on top of it, there's no easement there anymore. So I think it would be tough to do that. But, you know, let's, let's do some elevations and see how, if the water would run that way, you know, towards the other way better, you know?
Exactly, now, I've been speaking with the DPW director, and he's looking into doing camera work to see where the obstructions exist. And if, if we can get a length of pipe that we can actually salvage, and then take it from there, or if we just have to start from scratch and redo it all. So we'll get an assessment, and we'll just go from there, and then we'll talk about how the grant restrictions will, you know, either help us or inhibit us.
Right, and I don't think, personally, I, as a matter of fact, I know that we're not going to get permission to put a pipe on this gentleman's property. Again, so I would just have to say, we're going to have to do something different.
I think we have options.
Indigo, I have a question on that.
Yeah.
Where would you do the dredge if you can't get across to Doggy Beach?
Well, the whole dredging...
The table is almost equal to Fox Hill Road.
Right, the whole dog, the whole dredging process is going to start from Ward Road. And it's going to go all the way through the golf course into Bear Pond. Bear Pond is actually filled with muck too. Bear Pond, when I was a kid, and I know when T was a kid, and you, Bear Pond was a, it was deep. It's no longer deep anymore. It's all filled up with muck, and it's, so that has to be cleaned out. The ditches have to be cleaned out.
Is there, is there a connection between Bear Pond and the little channel there that runs across the golf course?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, it starts at Ward Road and goes all the way to the, right to Bear Pond. Everything drains into that golf course. And everything on the other side, where Ben lives there, it drains from forty steps down into that ditch, and it goes out the cl... lives there, it drains from 40 steps down into that ditch, and it goes out, the clapper valve on...
Goes on Joe's Beach.
Joe's Beach, right. So it's important that we look at both, both ways. I think dredging the ditches and keeping it flowing is the way to go.
Because that water table there, like I say, is on, it's equal to Fox Hill Road itself.
Right.
When you get an extra high tide and you get a storm, it's not going anywhere.
We would run into a real problem with the DEP if we started digging holes in the dune, trust me. You can't, you know, 100 years ago, you could do that, you could do anything you want, but now you can't, so, so that's, that's going to be an issue.
I still think we can do it.
Okay.
Need to Doggy Beach?
Yep, I do.
If the pipe's there, I don't know.
And as one, one of the parents said that night, if you stand down...
Right across where the path to go over there, where they go from the end of Ward Road.
Yeah, that's what I was...
It's away from the house. You go right from the end of Ward Road, right across where that path is where they walk over to do the dune.
That's the dune, though.
Yeah, but what about going under?
That actually sounds like a great idea.
It is a good idea, but you'd have to really, again, the...
You could restore the dune after you did that.
You'd have to, you'd have to, that would be a discussion for the DEP and would be very expensive, because you're talking about restoring a dune, a coastal dune.
Yeah.
That's what they're doing up there right now, so it's very expensive.
I wonder if we could get a subsequent grant for that and turn it into kind of a mini short beach project right there?
Yeah, you could.
Yeah.
It's worth looking at, so...
Great idea, yeah.
But as one woman said, as I was saying, standing here, when you stand down there, you're actually below sea level.
Yeah, right there.
Something has to give. And I'm not worried about DEP, Enzo.
Okay.
We're going to go right into Doggy Beach.
Okay.
Right through the path.
Well, we have a stormwater management plan, we have all that in place, it's, you know, so these are all things that we've got to look at, and, yep.
So is there any, are there any discussions? Do you see channels of open water? Seven, six, four, three, two...
Houses were built on House, go add...
Yeah, well, that's what happened, yeah.
Correct, in 1900.
So is there, is there any way to restore it to not flow across? Right, you know, we sort of talked a little bit about some of the pipes, putting a pipe out to Doggy Beach. Is there anything we can do to help soil out?
Naturally, you mean?
Or maybe, yeah, what naturally, or would mainly infrastructure be sort of worked in a natural, close to the ground, and you dredge it, and...
Well, we dredge, we dredge almost every year. We, the ditches get cleaned out almost every year. They have to.
Are there things we could do to, like a one-time cost where we could build certain infrastructure that would allow sediment to flow so that we wouldn't have to be dredged, or we don't have to be dredged once a decade versus once a year, that kind of thing?
If you look at the other end, the Willa roadside, we have a pumping station, and it basically takes and pumps the water out of Bear Pond and puts it over the wall, and then there's the clapper valve there. So we could replicate that on this end as well, and by pulling it from both sides, you can actually, through, you move the sedimentation and drain the, drain the water. It would be under circumstances that were severe. You know, we wouldn't do it all the time, but if we had, you know, significant storms, it'd be a great way to just empty it all out. That's one way.
It drains pretty good now. I mean, I can always remember before 78 and, before 78, at, storm of 78, the water never drained. So, but we put those pumps in Bear Pond, and we pump that water right over the, right over that seawall, and every time we have, we know we're going to have a storm, I mean, you know three, three or four days ahead of time now, or even a week ahead of time. So typically, what we do is we pump it down. We pump that whole pond down, and that just drains everything. So, and the clapper valve is really not the answer. It's not, it's not a good system because it plugs up and it doesn't always work right. So those pumps really help. Just, you just keep pumping, pumping water over and getting rid of it so that everything will drain in there. And I don't think, I mean, since 91, I don't think I've seen a storm where that we've really gotten inundated with water for any length of time. Maybe a day or so, Roz, would you say? But that's about it. So, I mean, the system works pretty good, and when we drain that, when we drain Bear Pond, that water just all runs down there. It all just, you can see it. You can go on Spring Road, you can see it flowing through the ditch on the golf course, so... That's it. Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn and go into executive session.
I move the Board of Selectmen move to executive session for real estate and personnel negotiations and not to return to public session.
Okay, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Okay, one, just one reminder, the Coast Guard housing surveys are due back February 3rd, 2017. Try not to be late with it. Okay, so we're adjourned.
But you can talk.
But you can talk, yeah.